Yes, I'll come across them. I haven't opened up the PDF yet. I did some.
Good. That might be important just from, I just got it this morning.
Okay. Well, it's something I found a problem with.
Okay. What's this?
This is like.
You're sorry?
I was thinking this is for me and my children.
Line is H O A. Sitting in a regular session Monday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It is four minutes after nine, it is nine thirty-four A M. They have noted that this meeting has been posted in manner for the time required. Did all members of the court are present? If it's convenient, please stand.
Blessed be. Father, we just want to thank you for another beautiful day in Young County. Father, we just want to bless all those that are present today. Father, we just want to thank you for the, this time of year, this Advent season with hope, love, peace, and joy. And remember what the true meaning of Christmas is. Father, we also, at this time of joy, we want to remember our concerns of last week's fires and tornadoes. Father, we just want to thank you for, and bless those first responders to protect property and loved ones. But we also need you to continue guidance and watch over those that go through the devastation and the recovery efforts from the tornadoes. And Father, we just, as we come to this time of meeting, we just want you to guide and direct us, give us wisdom as we face issues concerning our county and our communities. And Father, we just want you to forgive us where we fail you and work your will in our lives. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We are live, feeding lives to YouTube. Call in number for anyone that might wish to make any kind of comment or see the court about anything that's on our agenda today. Call in number is nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. Item number three, public comments, announcements, presentations, these are no action items. We've been given a COVID update. I don't necessarily have an update. Thing is they're usually a week old by the time we have a meeting. So the only thing I really know is that our hospitalizations for COVID nineteen are way down. Maybe just near zero. Our deaths have increased, but the last count had was seventy-one deaths due to COVID. In Young County. The next item that is not on here would be our Friday afternoon excitement in the fire that erupted suddenly. And I believe that there was one residence lost in that fire. I don't believe anyone was seriously injured, no fatalities. I think there was one victim that was burned slightly, but not seriously. Initial count that I had in the acres consumed was six hundred. I don't know if that's been revised. I haven't heard any further word of that.
There are even one, the police service told me five hundred and ninety acres.
Five ninety. That was pretty close. It started on Highway sixty-one and it was contained then at the west side of Bullet Road. I think five or six hundred bales of hay lost. The rest of it was brush, norm coastal, and made extra. There was a vehicle lost in it and a tractor, I believe, and a hydraulic rig. Pretty new paint craver. Those are the things that I know of. That were consumed.
May I say something, Mr. Judge? I want to thank the volunteers and the sheriff's office, but I want to thank Stacy too. I needed a grader, the fire services didn't do it. Stacy actually came out on the grader and cut the lines for him. So I just want to appreciate him publicly for coming out on the grader for us.
They did do a good job, all of them. They had circumstances likely were and the loss as minimal as it was. Everybody did a great job. I think we have Jackson County.
Yes, sir.
All of our respondents at Polley Fire Department, Grand Fire Department. On the same affected structures mainly, like a contained fire. Everybody did a good job there. Next read in the packet is Young County appraisal district commissioners' court resolution number zero nine zero. Which is going to be a resolution that we passed, let's see. I think that distributed our votes to, our nominee and our vote at the same time. Mr. Mike Sykes, he is our representative of the Young County appraisal district. And those results will be announced on the fifteenth of this month. We have the Young County tax collector, tax assessor collectors, November activity report. She gives to us once a month, indicating the activity in her office. We have a record filing, Local Government one seventy-one zero zero four. This officer's conflict disclosure statement of Jimmy Wiley, Commissioner Precinct Court, for Royce Richard, I don't see, and Don Peet, who we get business with. That's Commissioner Ford. That filing was filed with the county clerk and the English. I have a record in our commission's court papers. Does anybody else have anything they need to?
Young County Museum of History and Culture sent us a invitation for December twenty-first from ten to seven A M. to go by and look at it and see what all got put up as far as handouts.
Is there anything that anybody out here might want to mention, some kind of activity or some information or need that might be interesting to the public or the court, might need knowledge of?
Are we allowed to comment?
Excuse me?
Are you looking for public comments?
No, if like there's any activities in the county.
Well, historical commissions have in our meeting this Saturday.
Saturday?
At ten A M.
Okay.
Where at?
At the nineteen twenty-one jail, first floor only.
Item number four, consider county clerks managed from previous meeting, November the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Under any additional collection or corrections? I have a motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve those minutes. Any all in favor? Any opposed? Item number five is consider treasurer's financial report, updates on security pledge.
I have the October financials. Nothing earthshaking, anything worth to do.
Plus, we have a pledge of financial support.
We're starting to get more and more tax money in. Yes, she said, you know, the last week of December is usually when all the work is paid. So we should start getting a lot of money. Everything's balanced. We've been getting a lot of sales tax.
We're already seeing our record of sales tax.
Yeah.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Pruitt, to approve. I approve the president's financial report. Security's update, all in favor? Item number six, consider all of the budget minimums, vouchers payable.
I have vouchers payable. And already came out of this year twenty-three now. Total of the vouchers payable is one hundred ninety-three thousand nine sixty-nine oh seven. And out of the general fund is a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-three cents.
Fifty-three.
And there is no non-sweet.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Preston to approve voucher payable. That are all in, help line, ready. All in favor? Does anybody?
Yes, yes, I have a request, J P three scanner went out and he wanted to buy a new scanner. The price is seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. And requested to pay out of J P technology fund. And there's forty thousand nine oh seven for the technology.
That's false scanner?
Yes, sir.
J P three?
J P three.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pruitt, and second by Commissioner Preston to purchase our Justice of Peace print, precinct three, for a price of seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. A scanner?
Yes, sir.
J P technology. All in favor? Item number. Item number seven, discuss considering Chloe Bonds, who's being James in Hammond, Fort Belknap. Spencer Key, adult probation officer, and Marcia Elsumpur, assistant county auditor, all in the amount of five thousand each. So move. I have a motion by Commissioner Rogers, and second by Commissioner Preston, to approve. To approve his bonds as presented, all in favor? Item number eight, consider station agent November reports, request reimbursement. That would be Penny Baron in the amount of three nine, three eighty-nine twenty. And Savannah Williams on the amount of nine seventy forty-eight. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve these reimbursements as requested, all in favor? Item number nine, discuss November activity report for our county jail, sheriff's department.
Morning, I checked, there's forty-five on the jail. Also consumed block B to P D C. So on patient there time, you know. And had a lot of changes in the months of just two miles transports we had to this last month. A little over a thousand miles. My seizure coming back up since we held it up a little bit. I'm a hundred percent sure about it. We had great housing somewhere around now. We did last month.
I was gonna say that was a problem for a pilot.
But you're a pilot, sure.
How the day population is according to calendar year, physical.
Talking about the average, that was last month. Just, it was longer on a daily basis. But it's been locked in, I mean, this whole month, it's been bad down to forty-five right now. You can notice. Last off, my segment went down, but still I have nothing said. They had a total of one hundred and seventy-one calls, which is kind of high. Not a lot of them are driving, are they?
Have you marijuana?
Yeah, I did marijuana.
Marijuana hit the coast this week.
Now, I'm asking, if you don't notice, over on the jail. Now it's sixty to seventeen of them. They're seeking it makes a mark. It's quite good.
We're gonna, there are no more problems.
And all of the deputies just taking forty on. He's still, there's one down on that trouble. Jail, I believe, well, I think we're about one or two down now because we had two of them. One that had, you know, dispatched down. One resigned, leave the place last week. Yeah.
Yeah, well, he's up here right now. Can we go ahead and move to seventeen? Have him speak on that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so what we have.
That's we're moving item number seventeen, is discuss set of sites, exchange zone for the exchange of children at the Young County Sheriff's Office, this is, thanks, Preston.
Well, a lot, Commissioner Chriswell called me and asked me about, you know, doing this. What we have right now is all just video, no, no audio out in front whenever they do the child exchange. So now we have, they just haven't gave you the video yet, back on how much it would cost us to set this up outside where we have a video and audio and it records it. So they will have it if something was to happen. Because there's a lot of times when you have people that, whenever they're doing this, even in front of the sheriff's office, they still, some of the parents sometimes get a little outraged whenever they do the child exchange. So we were thinking about doing that and seeing if we could upgrade it a little bit outside. And if not, we'll have to try to do something inside the lobby area.
What's the normal type to get audio there?
Well, that's just it. Right now I have, actually I have two. We call, we stop all this has it set up. So we have phone calls out to them, trying to reach out to say what it costs them and what all it involves. Right now I don't know.
Now, you're with the audio, I mean, if it's like video outside.
It's gonna be just like, pretty much like, you know, these people that have the green bill on their.
Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not.
Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not, but.
Not to leave all of the out or anything like that, but getting hold of the police chief, Robera, and police chief here, Bullock, and they're all on board with doing something as well.
So we will see if we can come up with an estimate on how to, on what it's gonna cost us to bring it back here. Let's all look at it. I think the only problem that I see that will have is getting audio out there to where it's gonna work outside, you know, getting that far from the building or whatever because of the long way.
It is. You say there's video there, right?
There's video from the outside building out to the area where they're, they're front.
Main thing is you can see the physical abuse. You can't see the verbal abuse.
Right. Which I'm all for. I think it's a good idea if we can come up with a good solution where, you know, not everything's a hundred percent. But I think we ought to be able to figure out something where we can hear it and, you know, see what's going on. So at least these people that are coming up there feel safe exchanging their kids. Like I said, I've seen incidents up there, even whenever it wasn't, you know, there wasn't no physical abuse. It just got really, you know, a lot of verbal abuse.
Someone that threatened to burn their house down while they're standing there. You can't see that, but they tell them, well, I'm gonna take the kid next time and I'm gonna burn you out. That's, that can get pretty abusive what they're burning.
But we can get all this together and let y'all get into decide what y'all want to do. You know, there's two or three different ways we can do it, either outside or we can do it inside, however. But, you know, I think it was brought to my attention too that, you know, if we come inside, it makes some of these people feel like, okay, now we're inside. We have to really do exactly what they're asking us to do, you know, because now we are being watched. But getting them to come inside is what's gonna be a problem. So we'll get different options out here and see what we can do.
You, sir?
Okay. If you have any questions about that, so why I'm doing this, by the next time on the next commissioner meeting, let me know. I'll see if we can figure it out. I'll see if we can figure it out.
Since you're calling, which time and all that, I'll look that up to you.
Okay. Okay. All right, any questions? Thank you all.
Item number ten, discuss, consider Association of Rural Counties as market. Twenty, two thousand twenty-two, our membership renewal, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Most sports players are on that. We will redo that. Association of Rural Counties in Texas.
Have received, received any benefit from it. I was moving here in my part. I hadn't even dealt with them though, yet.
Well, that would be, that would be an organization that would go back for you with legislation and those kinds of things like that. Regardless of being rural.
Still.
Thank you.
Okay.
For joining the Austin Department, Department of Parks. Renewal. Motion by Commissioner Riley, second by Commissioner Chris to renew the membership.
Second, Brewit?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Brewit on the second to renew the Association of Rural Counties membership will be three hundred and ninety-five dollars. All in favor? Thirty-five. Item number eleven is discuss and consider and take possible action concerning the redistricting of Young County election precinct boundaries. I'll let Lauren come up here and give us a little detail on that. She and I and John Reddington, we were doing a call last week. She made her recommendations. The code may have been signed up right there on the wall.
So, yes, we did have a little need. Because the way we're redistricting the commissioner districts, there were four itsy-bitsy voter precincts that we are going to try to combine into two. So six and seven and sixteen and twenty will combine. And that way we get a little bit more bank for our budget that way. Because every time we order a different ballot style, it costs more money. So there's less than five hundred, I think, in precinct six and seven.
And that's gonna be myself and the last bill.
Yes, that's that, that area. And then sixteen and twenty is Gene and Loving. There's not any real differences on the ballots in those areas. And so there's no reason to keep them separate anymore. So.
And people are involved.
Involved in.
Sixteen and twenty.
Some more between five and seven hundred probably. They're both such small areas that, especially when we, when we moved that district line in precinct three, we lost somewhere between fifty and a hundred voters in precinct seven. And so that got us down to about a hundred voters in that district. And it doesn't seem fair to make the paper their own separate ballot when it's not any different than their next door papers, so.
I think, I think the requirements are, I don't feel that you have to, the suggestions are in code and in advisories that you have precinct in our population size and it's less than fifty. It suggests that it should be combined with another precinct. I don't think we have any that's less than fifty.
No, we don't have any less than fifty, but that, that number seven was getting so small by itself. It just really probably needs to go ahead and be combined. And the same with, with sixteen and twenty. They were, they were just pretty small.
That's what Mr. Reddington, he agreed with Lauren and the.
So, so now ten, which is the Newcastle district, will come down, just like your commissioner district does. Six and seven will come be, be combined and they'll be called number six. And so in precinct two, we'll have five and six. Precinct fours lines will all match and it will be one district. Well, it'll be two, because you'll have twenty-four and sixteen. And then one was not changed at all, so. Makes sense.
There is a.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud, yeah.
All these lines.
Okay. We have a, I have all of them that I got this morning. I think y'all have it on your computer. Well, such a long, long list.
No, because we went to countywide all the way there.
You can bug anywhere.
You can bug anywhere, so this actually, like I said, will, will really help the same as mine. We'll still keep all five polling places as far as I know. Something happened to a building, so.
Hey, you can. All discussion, including the number, no in precincts. If there were one longer, would adjust the precinct boundary safely?
You would not send one to make it.
This supplemental I do about this this morning. Here, remember that the commissioner's court of Young County, Texas, previously had opted to plan for the reading of commissioner's court precincts as a consequence of the boundary modifications made by that order, various changes in the underlying election precincts were required to conform election precinct boundaries to the new commissioner's court precincts. In addition, the resulting changes to election precincts may, may have an impact on the justice, these precincts, the supplemental, this supplemental order and the attached maps, data and narrative text forth the changes resulting from redistricting the commissioner's court precincts and provide the next place, you for the next necessity of the same. I'll do play the first one. Precinct over here somewhere specific. Very further discussing with regard to sitting on the combining precincts. We can adjust our precincts, our voting precincts at any time. This is just a very opportune time to combine the same. Doesn't necessarily have to be on redistricting here in the beginning of the day to just. I'm going to forward this order. Motion by myself. Second by Commissioner Brewit. To adopt combining precincts six and seven and precinct sixteen and twenty. And adopt this supplemental final order of revision of the boundaries of the following redistricting of the commissioner's court precincts. All in favor? Any in favor? Item number twelve is consider joint resolutions, statistical information for a joint. On a joint resolution for the primary elections, help by twenty to Lauren.
Okay. I'm going to probably suggest that we table this because of my letter of resignation that you all got last night. I don't feel like it's appropriate for us to enter into a contract for a, for a joint resolution today with my name on everything. So, and until the election commission makes a figure about how they're gonna handle it going forward, I think it would be prudent to go ahead and take a list.
Wait. I want to know right that name.
I know. I didn't know, and, and that's why it had to come last night is because I knew we were gonna do this this morning and so.
Lauren, our elections administrator, has, or what she had disclosed to me what that might be. She just takes another position that is gonna come quickly and was necessary for her to provide her position here, which she's held for eight years.
Years, two months.
Yep. Lauren came along, she had a really great interview and that's probably what. My daughter who brought me to that decision, she's been a go-getter, will be. We wish her all the best in, in her future adventure, whatever that might be.
And, and very soon, very soon. But, yeah, I've, I've enjoyed a lot of what I've done the last eight years. There's been moments, but that's with you guys, but it's been an incredible experience. And so I appreciate y'all letting me do this every day and going with me on some big decisions, so.
Make sure you get them, I put them all packed up.
That's the point.
Before you leave.
Get me on the truck, before I leave. I'll get all boxed out.
With that, we're having all, we're required to have all our machines modified. And I think we've had those machines.
We took possession in, in January of seventeen.
January of seventeen, four year. And they were built where they could be modified, which was a good thing to allow for a at-location ballot to be moved, a lead is what the term may be. So a voter utilizing those machines will be able to see the ballot that they marked. Although they can't take it with them, they'll have to lead it. But they can see the actual ballot that they marked and verify that that's the way they vote. And they're being packed up, those machines.
Yeah, so don't steal my boxes. I know, it's Christmas now, don't steal my boxes.
Then you have a pickup date.
Which one?
Twentieth, so they'll be picked up the twentieth of this month and shipped to Austin. Where our heart intercity is, they'll do the upgrades. For whatever degrees there is necessary and then ship them back to us. We hope everything comes along perfectly for our primary elections.
When is it recommended this resolution be signed?
I don't know that there's a, a hard, fast date. We will have to give some kind of indication pretty quickly of what the election commission wants to do, especially as far as this goes, because ballots will need to be ordered. And I don't know when the local parties are planning to do their ballot drawings. I haven't seen that information yet, but I can't order ballots until we get some of that settled down, so.
At what time the ballots have to be ordered?
I don't know. I, I didn't, what is that date? It's after the ballot drawing and I usually do it the same day as the ballot drawings, so. But part of that is, if we continue with a joint resolution, if we continue with a joint primary, then that's how we order ballots, but if the commission decides to do something different, then, then that'll change. It just depends on how, how we'll handle that.
I'll let the police and take that up very quickly.
My intention is that the last stand building will be the day that we pack the machines up, so the plan. I will have to make my exit right after that. I will be available to some extent over the business break, but not after that.
Okay, we won't delay any action on the joint resolution review bill. Such times our party chairs. And we, such times we get whoever's gonna make the interim, the administrator. I'll check on that, see what we've got to do. To do that, and then always don't happen. If it's, if it's okay with the court, we'll take no action on that at the present time. And look for a future, maybe called maybe more. Our next lady, Prager, maybe will be on twenty.
Seven, seven, seven.
Forty-seven. Got forty-five, we're moving that one.
Say, I bet you didn't get a call.
Item number thirteen is discuss, set quote for generic GIS interface licensing maintenance agreement. Seven hundred and nine dollars. This is also an election-related matter.
So the vendor that we partnered about a year and a half, two years ago, VR system has a module for redistricting and maintaining our street guides, basically. But it's an extra expense, it's seven hundred dollars. And I think it drops to six hundred and eleven on our licensing and maintenance next year. So it's not a large amount of money, but what it would allow us to do is we could drop one file to the vendor. They would do whatever computer magic they do and we wouldn't have to go street by street by street to redistrict. That takes weeks and weeks. Obviously, we don't necessarily have that luxury this year because of the way redistricting has gone. And so it would be very handy if we could just make that a very quick transaction. It's not giving them any more information than what they already handled for us. They already have all our districts, they already have all our voters in their software. This would just be them doing the transition of the magic that computers do that I don't understand.
So they could do this except that we'd have to have the license if they had to have the license.
And, and, right, and so this, this adds that piece to the.
This is right. I had mentioned with voting precincts.
Yes, and, and all the other precincts that go along, so cities, schools, hospitals, SUDs, state districts, all that would be in one file and it would update rather than like when Marsha and Linda did it ten years ago and they went for weeks, you know, going block by block through the county. With the primary coming up quickly, we don't have a lot of time to be doing block by block, so.
So this is here, and maintenance is here.
Yeah, and it would, it would, from what I understand, fall in with the licensing maintenance that will already be billed for every year for the, for the software at large.
Can we make these address changes just once a year?
No, I mean, address changes, if, if Harley gets somebody moving in, building a new street, you know, tomorrow, it would, we would send that file up and it would, it would go ahead and district them. Well, until you start adding streets or houses or things that need to be added.
Would he give you the opportunity to initiate it later?
If, if John gives me the, the file that he was working on with my voters, um, I can, I can initiate that, um, and I, I need him to do that quickly because we also have to get voter cards out, um, and I need to be able to send that to the vendor who has always handled our, our voter cards for me.
Well, I got an email just before the meeting. Did you see that?
It was just Max.
Okay.
So, I, I can email him, I, I'm sure he was waiting to make sure that this went through before he finalized my voter list, but, um, but yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I'm waiting on, is, is just John. I, I think six or seven hundred dollars a year is more than worth the, the time and effort, and it will be more accurate.
Seven hundred and nine dollars of digital costs and then six hundred and eleven dollars annually?
Annually, yeah. It, it will be a lot more, um...
Easy.
Easy and correct. Um, you know, we, we won't necessarily have so much trouble with streets that are in wall precinct or, or whatever, once we get it set and verified.
Go ahead.
Do you find that, you would be in your voting program?
I'm sure it can wiggle around pretty well, so, seven hundred and nine a year.
I'll say. Mr. Rogers on motion to acquire a license and maintenance agreement with a generic GIS interface, or is that with, uh, VR?
What is that? Simple, yes. And it, it will be through VR systems.
To acquire that license agreement through VR systems. For the generic GIS interface licenses. Rogers on motion. Go ahead on second. All in favor? Eric, file both. Do you have another item?
That's all my dogs and ponies.
We can touch it all, let it go.
I plan to have as much of this humanly possible.
Always black, always white, thanks.
The working vacation, so, I would say fun goal, but, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren, good luck to you.
Thanks, thank you.
Item number fourteen is discussed, considered resolution number nine-one-dash-FY-twenty-twenty-two regarding opioid seven. All that information, there was a good, large amount of information that came with that, I think I forgot it all to the Commissioner's committee. On their computers, but if we participate in the settlement that the state's made, or our portion share of the opioid, opioid money that we receive from the state and allocated to, um, actually it's allocated to each region and, and then to each county. I think I have seen, but I can't remember what our specific allocation would be, but it's not over that, it's fifty-eighteen or eighteen thousand dollars, something like that, and I'm sure it's got streams taxed into how those, spend those funds, but nevertheless, we have to have a resolution, signed resolution of, um, involving that and, and agreeing to the allocation under the settlement as our state made, you know, like, like, figured. So, um, does the court have any discussion or direction regarding that? It's something that's gotta be done pretty quick, to do it, and hope like we ever have the light. I agree, I second that. Kind of motion by Wiley, Commissioner Wiley. Second by, uh, who? To adopt resolution, um, number nine-one-dash-FY-twenty-twenty-two regarding opioid settlement, um, with, that's gonna be with the state of Texas, the Attorney General's office. All in favor? Item number fifteen is discussed, considered water leak, quotes, bids, prices, or repair, replacement, distribution system, court found out.
We got some bids.
We got three bids, um, do you got the... Oh, you got... I got three bids, um... Three bids, um...
These, um, we're, we're gonna have to call these price quotes, I think, because it's gonna be above the, um, it may be above our limit to, um, if you contract a guy and take four bids. We'll see what numbers are here in this.
Price quotes, yes, price quotes here. Um, every one of them that came out of top two, um, they all understood the situation, and everybody kinda had the same idea of, you know, show them where we needed water, where the water was going, basically replacing the system, the water system that we have there, so, um, and then they, this is what they returned to us, was these, um, price quotes.
Okay, everyone.
Madrid plumbing is the, uh, first one of the guy, it's, do it, second price.
Yeah.
It's, uh, he, he's twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-two, twenty-seven cents for his, um, and a deposit of five thousand is required to start for him.
Does, does this one, the fan?
Not as well as the other two, um, but I did walk through with him, um, showed him the same stuff that I showed the other two. The second one is from Stark, um, um, there's thirteen thousand and forty-one, it's been their price. And they got a good, pretty good description of...
I know it's, that was new installation, the archives building, Merrick's kitchen and public restroom, it's good.
And then we've also got, uh, on the way between the kitchen and Merrick's, over to the, uh, public bathroom, there's also, where the RV hookups are at, there's also water, and like, there's a faucet at the gray barbed, so, I know we include those. So that one's, Stark plumbing is thirteen thousand forty-one, um, and then, I'll have to tag it with what it's got, the hillbilly.
And you got my name blanked, uh, very good description of the place.
He gave, he probably gave the best detailed description of it.
There's forty-six thousand five hundred and three dollars.
All of them were abandoned and that in place?
Yes, it was. Why, what they're doing is they're replacing everything underground all the way up to the, um...
Right, but where it says RV stations will be removed, and then everything else will be just abandoned in place.
Yes, we pull that, pull out if we decide to.
Water tarred, um...
Yes.
Stations.
They'll have, uh, yeah, we've got two, um, faucets there, the, the gray barbed and the one across from the gray barbed, that whole thing, there, they're gonna have, uh, oh, have water.
They said two for us, three faucets.
Yeah.
One faucet service, right over the side.
There's only one over there.
Yeah.
There's only one.
Right there next to the road.
It's right in the center. Which, that's the one that's causing more problems.
Yeah, that's the one you always have links to.
And, and like I said, I talked to all three of them, they all, um, all understand the problem, everybody agreed that it's probably best just to put a new system in because you start replacing it, we don't know what has been piecemeal together, we don't even know where all the water is, so, the one thing...
You're thinking of the schematic, all, all water pumps.
Well, and, uh, that's what I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, we can do that, um, I do know that James Lane also offers an, an actual map with, that comes with it, so, but, of course, recording the lines of where the water's at and stuff isn't really, hardly do that.
Substantial difference.
I see, yeah.
And like from under, everybody getting on the same thing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I walked them all through the same stuff.
This is number one, I was saying, and I, I, Lane do this. He's been out there all the time. He's been out there all the time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've met with him a couple times.
God, I'm hearing about old and some roads.
'Cause you gotta get underneath, um, to go from the barracks to the, well, I think the other ones are gonna trench, or I think Stark plumbing said they decided what was the, um, most cost effective, but, because you gotta get, our meter is on the east, east side of the fort next to sixty-one, but we've got water that goes all the way into the north side, so you gotta go under those two roads to get there. I think they're probably trench.
Yeah, that's true for over...
Is it a four-inch trench or something like that, four-inch wide to get through there?
Item number one, Star said one, hydrant.
Um, yeah, I did one for us. We just add another hundred and five dollars.
Four-inch wide for replacing every hydrant, or can, uh, anything, yeah.
There's only two.
There's only two. There's only two of them.
So does that another hundred bucks to that?
Because they're not in...
About two water fountains.
That runs in, they'll go to the water fountain, replace everything to the water fountain, but the system itself will be, uh, not gonna replace the water fountain, the guts of the water fountain, it's just to the water fountain, to the water fountain that passes. But anything that is above ground, where it comes to the, like, the outside of the building, or the cutoff of that, you know, to replace all that, but inside the building, once you get inside the building, they're not, I didn't ask any of them to do the bins on those, it's just underground stuff. I think Star got cheap to mend.
Yeah, just still add that a hundred dollars, I mean, if they trench across the road, all they're gonna do is fix the road, fix the road.
Well, that's what, we got the patch, uh, right over there.
Oh, the patch, you better work harder, sir.
Like, the lunder, much too, you know, that's lots of, that's lots of...
It was. But I, I ran through the exact same, I walked through the entire thing, the exact same, I mean, I don't know underground terminology for lunding and stuff, I know they all just suddenly wanted to go back with the expandable specs or whatever, it's just, but...
Now, pads is bad.
Yeah, it's, it's longer and easier to make. Uh, one thing that Star did mention when they were out there, which, the, um, instead of running from the meter on the east side all the way to the northwest side of the fort, putting another, about, of the bathroom, over there, he said he would call and see what the price would be for that.
So like, have two meters?
Yeah, 'cause we got one at the house, then we got one at the... Maybe they decided not to do that, I don't know.
Well, probably have two meters, you're gonna have two metal, but it's public bathroom, you'll never meet your minimum, you're just gonna pay for water you never use, uh, every month.
If they're gonna be trenching inside their...
It's gonna look something...
You need to know that they stay there, not, not technically.
Not very, publicly friendly right now.
Say that again, or not?
Restaurants, public restaurants, like I said, they're, they're, don't have water for them all the time.
Yeah, no, uh, right now, they definitely don't, but, um...
They've been being locked all the time.
Well, if it's cold, I like it, freezing, that's just standing up, except for me, it's frozen, I, I like it, but, um, and if there's been problems in the plumbing, but I'd fix it once.
And not knowing where, still, and where, wrong...
Yes.
No.
So what, we done fixed it?
Well, it's not inside the building, and, and, no, nobody, I mean, I've had all three of them come out, look with me.
And it's not in there.
Plumbing is not in the restroom, the problem's not in any of the buildings, it's in the ground somewhere, and everybody agreed with that. 'Cause I walked through the buildings with them, showed them everything that, and it might be more than one leak underground, we don't know.
Yeah.
Sugar saying they eat that from here to the end of town.
You can stand around there, whether it's you can make sure that with the order, I always do, anytime a hole's put in the ground, I'll stand there and...
He does, trust me.
He's there, we done buttons, didn't we?
I'm making motion to go with Star being...
Yeah, and they're local, and we have laid them out there, they'll be out there in the penance.
Bill, I didn't make that, you need to do both, frost freeze though.
Yeah.
And with, and with that, yes, I'll make the same motion that they do with, is that frost free in there?
Do you have anything you can say about, about these price quotes?
Quotes, they're quotes, they're not over fifty thousand, so we're good. Um, it's a big difference between James Lane, but if everybody looked at them...
I walked them all through the same stuff.
Long as we're comparing apples to apples.
Yeah, I mean, he came out, Lane had been out there twice, he came out there once to try to help find the leak and discuss what was going on, when everybody else was coming out, and then came out again to do this, so, um, but I walked through the place and...
Good motion by Commissioner Wiley, second. Commissioner Pruitt. Guess that would fund the accept in...
Pro though.
Quote, quote, Stark plumbing, quote, sorry.
Jim, can you even accompany the, the Star and the Green?
I can forward you. Of what they're slumping repairs, replaces... Repair and replace the fork bell now. Says damn town, before that. That's a bid, I'll have, back down there and get it, call. All in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Hey, Jim, call them and tell them to get there ASAP.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, discussed, considered courthouse backup generator quote, Margaret Grove, Lankford. I had Margaret Grove herself come in and look over the... Over the circumstances of her electrical requirements, you see the, um, letter that he provided there. And I'm still uncertain where the disclaimer's written for installation, or whether it includes the. The generator itself and the switch, if it'd be necessary.
So that's the goal, that's installing your transfer switch. Since this scope right here is to install the generator transfer switch.
We're in charge of the pad, fuel supply, all that except.
Now, it has language in there that's not clear, it's amazing, I'm riched out, tell them how to learn back here.
This press inflict excludes tax, fuel lines work if gas is selected offloading, we're gonna have to offload it ourselves. Saving equipment, painting, gen set, transfer switch is not in the. And then correct pad for the equipment. So hope we're getting there in a bid for a generator.
Yeah.
It's on the truck or car, I mean, if.
And you take it off and you do it.
If they're gonna be that expensive, we're gonna need to go out first soon, because.
Yeah.
Especially if we're talking about using COVID funds, because they're gonna be very. Threat on our bid process.
A hundred thirty-one dollar.
What did you say about the letter? What did you say about the letter?
Uh, he said he, he couldn't, he didn't think that he could accurately, um. Put a quote on that because he just didn't know the history of the circuitry. And, uh. Been more knowledgeable about the history of the circuitry in there, like he said in his letter, he said. When they find those spice agents that, uh, saying they caused problems. It's gonna take fifteen, twelve, fifteen hundred dollars. For circuitry to go to those end days. So he wouldn't give a quote, he wouldn't give a quote on. On wiring circuitry.
About here.
No, he didn't give any of it. All right, well, he's saying pretty good. He's been a bit of a.
He wanted to do a character on stage, he wanted to set his equipment up on here to see exactly what we're drawing and wearing. Again, maybe you can walk through with that, Dave?
I saw they'll have to get it anyway. He's still, generator line sales. The, after that, he questions.
Yeah, but we'd like to at least, if we're gonna take a bid, then at least need to set it, build the pad, set it, and do all that, this, we're, we're just buying a generator, we're pretty well in charge of setting that up, other than electric wire. Drilling.
Okay, of course, pleasure, like no action there?
No, I have no action.
Uh, we passed up, um, seventeen-nine and eighteen, discuss, consider application, permit to install entry culvers in County Road right of way. Right of way ditch line four, cement mountain road in precinct one. Pringle Roffel in precinct three, South Road in precinct three, Herring Road in precinct three, and Briar Creek Road in precinct four. Okay, number one, three, and four.
Mine in precinct one, it's right next to a creek, it's gonna be a six foot culvert with about forty foot minimum for the turn in. We're gonna cut trees and redo the ditch line pretty well for it, so, uh. Yeah, they've, they've got the culvert bought now, they're ready to start whenever we get this done today.
Ready to do the installation?
No, we're doing the installation. It's in our right of way.
I mean, you're, you're just.
Yeah, just as I get our, you know, you could fire.
I could say, but, but if I do that, then I'm gonna tell more people to do that all the time. Then the last time I had a contractor do one, I went and pulled it back out, so, because it wasn't letting it run through.
I'm sure by now, yeah. Anybody else?
I got one contractor that wanna do it. You know, the landowner's gonna say, yeah, but did it, I'm not gonna pass it out of jail.
You got, have three, all three of them on the contract? Precinct four?
I just wanna do that one there.
You got that letter, which you, did you get it off?
Yeah, we've got that.
Better leave that.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So.
Second. I was gonna make to three, Wiley. Preston. Okay, that is to. Install or allow installation of, uh. Culvers. In precinct one, three, four, precinct mountain road, Pringle Roffel road. South Road, Herring Road, Briar Creek Road, the entry culvert, and the ditch right there. Call favor. Wow, number nineteen, that discussed, consider authorization to access Star Culver culvers from Eugene, Osmond, that's over precinct four.
Yeah, you got very much.
Both of them, Wiley. That's right. Preston. How? Better information. Call favor.
Yeah.
Out of number twenty. Discuss, consider commercial lease agreement for a two thousand twenty-two belly dump trailer, Brad's trailer manufacturing LLC in precinct four.
And a little trailer that'll be replaced, I'm gonna lease this for six months for three thousand dollars. Get that on its own before we do anything else.
Okay, you own, own one, you're replacing it with a lease.
Yes.
Lease cost is what?
Three thousand, six months.
Three thousand, uh, gonna be a recurring lease?
You know, I have a choice in that lease, do you buy that right? And that three thousand comes off the top of the, of the price of that one.
How much, Wiley? You got a second? Got a second? Second, my permission to through it to enter into lease agreement. With Brad's trailer for a bottom dump belly dump trailer. Signed precinct four, in County. Call favor. Out of number twenty-one, discuss, consider burn restrictions, fireworks regulations.
After this week, I'm, I've been forward the fireworks regulations for coming into the new year, unless we get lots of rain.
That's what I believe. We're gonna get some rain, we should go to the Saturday.
Six, six of beans.
Fifty percent chance on Friday.
That's a long, it can be late without go.
Well, I'll tell you, whether or not it's, uh. Whether or not it'll get raining, we're not gonna have, uh, much green growth till spring. We've got to build our fuels, rain may create a little bit of misunderstanding that maybe we can burn things and. I suppose that would inhibit the, um, emergency services and access and property, or it could, uh. We built a bat before, tore up a lot of equipment, stuck a lot of trucks, and maybe even burned one or two of them. Before, so. Whether it rains or we need the rain and want the rain, rest of ours is kind of low. Where is that? You know, sometimes the rain gives people false hope, that okay to burn.
Yeah, but now, control burning, half of it, they've been getting out of control too.
I might motion you to enter into fire man, and also. Clarify on the fireworks and restrictions.
Restrict fireworks?
Restrictions and things.
I think that order, those orders, uh, call for. Missiles with. Even rockets with sticks and missiles with things, I believe, like sales. Restrict the sale, the use of those.
Yes.
I'll second that.
That order is good for ninety days, Greg, until we, unless we do it live.
Wow, and we know we've lifted it.
But it rained the other day, a little bit of rain we got, and we had a fire that followed after that.
Well, burn restriction order, ninety day order, unless, um, we. Come under the, um. Horse preserve syndrome, it'll. It should relinquish itself, or I, I can withdraw that. Or send that order. On its own, married, uh, conditions, call for it, I wouldn't look for it to do so. We have motion, uh, Mr. Wiley and Senator, which, Preston. To. Issue a burn restriction order, and also a order regulating fireworks for sale for Christmas holiday season. Which specifically on rockets with sticks, missiles with things, I believe, is what he calls for. Restrict the sale of each of them. Call the favor.
Should take about ten minutes, Greg.
Okay. It is, you got eight minutes until eleven, we're, we're, we're getting about five after eleven.
Can you put in that specific, that restrictions?
I want to go to one thing, and ask you for sure, and then, and then. You have no question, Cole?
No, I'm not. Well, my priest. I could argue.
Yeah.
And this will be the supplemental on the.
Fifty.
Fifty. Nope, you're good. Inter with preacher. The day with the natural preacher.
Oh, bring time.
What was interesting was it was like.
When it was over, when it was over.
Did your grandchild step that.
Cause I. So. And like this almost done.
I've, I've checked with the stranger.
I was too shocked. What the heck?
It was our wedding.
Oh, I was hungry.
Yeah.
That's my niece. I want to be married. He's sitting. Yeah, it's so funny. I think I'm gonna have to. Yeah, like I totally just. I was like. This is the best I ever. I just wanted to. Life was killed by them. That was my brother. Yeah.
Was it good?
She said. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't want to set up a class system. Yeah. This is Jamie. This is a person named Jamie. Chris. So. Your wife is a preacher. Only birth. We manage. That one is.
Yeah. So. For two of the last.
Well, no, but you can.
The other. Did the ceremony. And it was kind of, there was a little bit of conflict.
And I have two.
Yeah. And at the end, he didn't announce that the room was taken by.
I was joking.
No. And basically, the parents just were serving the over. We were at the first. And, uh, and this we found out later, it was really kind of vague. Like, they weren't gonna move any, they weren't gonna make it to later, it was like a. They're getting.
They wanted to test.
But it wasn't, wasn't legal that well, it was. No, because it had to be their scholarships or something because they couldn't actually be married, so it was like a. It wasn't, it wasn't. But they made it. They're married, but they're not gonna mess their, mess their scholarships. People usually make sure. Yeah, they just looking at the father's face. His son's. Her last name.
That's funny.
Yeah. I guess she walked in. Yeah.
Cool, like he wasn't.
Yeah. And I can see. And it was getting pretty grand.
Oh, he said.
And it was, it was a. She looked. I thought it was a star. Planets. They're sort of. Every area they. Sort of for all my friends. Very like. Almost like circle. Do you like the silks, can they do the. Yeah, her deal was. She had like new ropes, ropes and the pair of not ropes. Yeah, there's. She was like, yeah. Wrap the same. She's a hero. And there was a lot of fires, like fire. It was crazy.
I was just telling him, I was saying, I buy my old phone.
As a tribute. There was, there was actually a little comedy. Yeah. And there were. No, it was. Norm from cheer.
It's F the teller.
Yes. And he sat in the corner and drank a beer and kind of like. And.
Of course, you can't ever find it.
No, of course, and not talk to anybody. It was not.
We did that down the hill on the back.
I can tell you. Experience is difficult.
I can do that.
We did that down the hill on the back.
I can tell you. Experience is difficult.
But we put this over in a model. And I don't know that very much to church or fuck, and then nothing holds.
If you do a video show, I'll let you spend a rope in the house and point it out.
We did that one. Fifty's. Yeah, in the fifty's, they had a whole. We bothered them to deal with. We gotta deal with.
They just smiled.
They actually said, "Quip that." Say you want your field terrorists or whatever, you can leave kind of equipment, you have everybody in them days. The reason they get done away with that was because, uh, you're. Well, you have to. They couldn't compete with the price of them to do that. So they made it to where it was important for them to make believe, so state pass laws.
I agree. And I have to drag.
No, tell them what they're.
I don't know.
Their auditors banned them anyways. As far as the belief. You know, it's a long time. Yeah.
She wanted to, uh, either.
Thank you so much. Yeah, a couple of seconds. I lost all my. We started. I don't. No. It's been. I'm going down. I'm showing her videos. Okay, that's a little. You're gonna come and have. Yes, ma'am. I actually.
But those problems, you lost all your. That is.
Yeah.
That was supposed to. It was never born. And what's this?
They just sing down. Yeah, you know, they, they're a product.
Yeah, that can get the family back to home or what. Go back with it.
I've never heard of what she was.
Did them pronounce their.
You're jerking it, dude.
Can you get your.
I can if I tell him I'm the one that rules, stand there until he's had a word.
Yeah.
It is one thing. He'll come get you then. That's been a problem with the law. That first year he started.
Supplemental.
Hey, didn't you try to have this, don't have to. We had some problems on that.
A great trip.
Yeah, but I'm having.
But it's close to me.
No.
Give me some nice ass, come on.
You get back to your.
I'll have it for me. Four hundred. So I'll.
I have any. Hey, I'm gonna leave this for you.
Bucket.
That's a job.
Little bucket. That's right.
So. It was good. It's very, very challenging.
Take, take. It's better to. That's good. How do you know?
Uh, like you have a can. Where it's on the, uh, model. Full of.
And then just leave it there for the judge.
A lot of.
I don't work with the campaign.
You got my report? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Well, I'm sure. I did for you. Oh, you did?
Uh, I don't mind.
And I have your coffee, so here's.
I mean, it sounded like it was. Ten. I'm very, very proud to hear the story.
So, hey, and Mark.
It wasn't.
Jesus. But it'll. I'll call one twice.
Three, two, and then. I come home in thirty-five more forty trucks and a mower and. Floater. Everybody was talking here on their. I'm trying to see if it's probably a year ago.
I don't know. I was just thinking. I'm just thinking it works.
I don't, I just forgot for you.
No, it isn't.
It is a lot. It's even a bank. I just hope I wouldn't say it. Um, yeah, please, please.
This is Brooklyn County Commissioners Court, come back to order. It's, um, about seven minutes after from eleven on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. On Bridge Dial Number Twenty-Two, which is the discussion consideration, a request to use disposition properties, i.e. Nineteen twenty-one jail and adjoining property of Farmer Ellie's detention center. And we've got that as Brandon Anderson, Chris Lada Cruz, and Grant Ingram as the presenter there. Uh, let me preface this just a little bit. We, when the agenda was made public, um, we got a request for historical commission to have some kind of a counter presentation on, on this issue. Uh, that, uh, was before, was after the agenda was printed, released, but it was in ample time to get a supplemental, and we have supplementals quite often, so I authorized a supplemental agenda to accommodate that circumstance. And before any action may be taken here, I'm, I'm gonna ask the court to hear both parties. And obviously, we've heard one party, uh, before and request for some actions, so I'll let Mr. Brandon Anderson and his group, uh, come forward and, um, restate their request.
Well, nothing new from the request that we put in October twenty-fifth, um, other than there has been a lot of discussion, a lot of, uh, one-way, good, bad, or indifferent. I think discussion's important. Uh, certainly don't have any problem with the ideas and the suggestions that have been made. Obviously, your supplemental agenda item, in my opinion, should go prior to ours, however, obviously, in, in your circumstances, I would probably table the agenda item. Um, either way, for you guys to soak and absorb their, their, uh, suggestion, and that's what, when I visited with Eric, that's why I made the recommendation, I, I would hope that though moving forward, we would not, I almost feel like from a city's perspective, we've been somewhat vilified in the fact that we've simply made a suggestion on what to do with that property. They're welcome to make this next position. This is how we grow as a community. This is how we work together as a community to become better and improve things. And so I'm anxious to hear their idea. I would love to, to be, uh, you know, possibly involved in that idea. If it's something that down the future, we can help raise funds. Our original proposal was to razz the building, try to keep and secure as much, uh, history as possible. Uh, and in its place, place a, I think it was about a hundred and ten foot long by forty foot wide pavilion, uh, for open and, and outdoor events. But, uh, I didn't bring any presentations this morning. I didn't bring any of the examples. I apologize for that. I didn't know we were gonna be reheard, but, uh, but certainly our request is still the same. Anxious to hear the supplemental items, why I asked this morning, uh, when it might be. I do know there's a few individuals that took off work today to come to make public comment. We had told them to come during item three, because that's when public comment is listed. Um, and so I just said today, you know what? I don't want this meeting, and I would hope you wouldn't want your commissioners' court meeting to end up being a, a line drawn in the sand. I think communication is the key to anybody's success, and the more we get it out there. The reason we did ask for a decision, obviously, this is something we're wanting to do for the hundred and fiftieth anniversary, uh, to celebrate our community. For us to be able to get that project done by the end of next year, which is the hundred and fiftieth year, that's why we've asked for, for you guys as a commissioners' court to make that decision. We ultimately know that decision lies with you. We have simply made a suggestion, and we appreciate your consideration.
You're talking, you're talking about the hundred and fiftieth celebration of the play out of the city, right?
Yes, sir, which is in the city limits in county, or in the, in the county, yes, sir.
Um, the reason it was, um, agenda like it was is because of the late, um, request that came in after the agenda had been made public.
Sure, but you, you have the power to take up any agenda item anytime during the meeting. You threw that out in seventeen, and you took it up in the sheriff's here, so.
There really wasn't any. I, I didn't consider anything one way or the other. Making a.
Sure, well, I, I would specifically ask that you table our agenda item at least until you hear the supplemental.
Yeah, that's. Um, yours, yours has been pub- publicized and published, the.
Yes, sir.
Program that y'all, so everybody knows what that is.
Sure. Yeah, and I left with an open-ended question, and if you guys had any follow-up questions or concerns to holler, and I haven't heard from anybody, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Young County Historical Commission.
We've got a co- a public comment on our agenda. Can they share that public comment now, or?
No.
Hello. Um, I just wanted to give a word from the community. Um, my name's Christy Chapel. I run the Holiday Inn here in town. And my sole job is to bring out the towners to Graham and to have, to create hot tax for our county. Um, I also have lived here in Graham for over thirty years, so I feel like this issue not only affects my day-to-day job, but the community that I do live in. Um, I do believe as a whole that we need to see both sides of how this could affect either way of keeping a building. Um, where we're footing the expenses for maintenance, or if we should maybe come up with another idea where that maintenance expense could go down. Um, I feel like the building itself has used, that we have used that for the purpose that it was, and that we no longer have a purpose for it anymore. Building this proposed pavilion, um, that Brendan has been talking about, could bring a lot of foot traffic to our square. Um, a lot of out-of-towners might have a aspect on seeing that we would like to have seating for them during the food truck. The barbecue championship, a great year for us. Um, having places to sit and eat would be great for that. Just a little input on that.
So.
John, also, the head of the lady had sent an email, Stephanie Campbell, Campbell Will State. State her wishes and her thoughts on what to do about the jail also. She stated that that jail has done its, its purpose, and that pavilion would be beneficial to everybody in our community. Whether it's the whole county or whoever comes for it. That was her desire too. She states in her, her letter.
Great. Like, know that letter and give the case and make it part of the record. I see Susan Smith, Julia Cox, they're representing the Historical Commission. Would you like to come forward? Giant size also say he'll be here. Give us.
Thank you. I guess it's just me to get to make this proposal. Uh, like y'all know, uh, there's a lot of people that, that wanna speak, and I, at some point, it would be good to, to hear. There's been a lot of comments on both sides. Uh, first off, we have, there's two items on our, on the supplemental agenda. The first was the presentation of petition numbers. We've circulated a petition throughout the county for about a week and a half, and, uh, our, the, there's the names, the total numbers on them were, what?
Four hundred and seven as of Saturday afternoon.
And this is simply, uh, in favor of doing something to save the jail. And based on that, our proposal at this point, I'd like to just read it, cause I've spent a while reading. Uh, gentlemen, uh, you've heard the discussions, public comments, and social, here and on social media. You have the presentation of the petition numbers. I would now like to offer a proposal that reduces this animosity that's growing between the two groups. And that's been bothering us as Historical Commission, we're seeing two suspicions drill apart. Uh, I have secured a pledge from several local businesses around the county, who will be willing to put together a fund to pay for the expenses of, of the building for a full year. willing to put together a fund to pay for the expenses of the building for a full year, cover all the expenses on it. This removes the burden from the county to maintain the twenty-one jail building. During the first month of next year, we would request a committee made up of members appointed from the commissioners, the Historical Commission, the city, and other groups that are concerned or have issue with this building. The charge to this committee will be to find a best use plan for the building or the lot going forward with time to make financial feasibility studies to back these proposals. Right now, we've got proposal after proposal, what would be best for the thing, but nobody's had time to put together the financials and feasibilities on what to do with the building. Let's to back these with, the time limit for these discussions and a decision and a final proposal would be one year. It's my hope and belief that within this period, we'll find a way to preserve this structure. It's a personal thing. Quote, "A friend of mine, in a hundred years, it would be nice for people to look out there and say, 'What a beautiful two-hundred-year-old building.'" First and foremost, keep this county building in the hands of the county, and I believe this is the forceback to best way to go forward for everybody concerned. Do you have any to?
One thing I would like to share with y'all.
Your type's name, please, please.
Susan Smith. I'm a citizen and resident one, and I'm also the county Historical Commission co-chair, with two other chairs. This weekend, we received this in the mail. This is put out by the Texas Sports Trail, Authentic Texas Magazine, and this entire issue is devoted to outlaws and the reuse of historic jails as museums, as meeting places, as bed and breakfasts. Just incredible, the number of communities that have embraced and saved their jails and given them a new life, and they've actually become a tourism destination. And so, I know that part of the argument in this whole thing is we want to bring tourism to Graham. And I just want to say, from my personal opinion, I went to school, E.T. Arlington, and if you go to downtown Arlington, there are zero, zero buildings, not even the well exists from their original downtown. The reason that people come to towns is to see buildings that don't exist in their towns. These buildings that surround our town may look old, but people thrive on that. They love it, the ability to go in and see that there might even speak easy there. They go to Saint Angelo to see the tunnels that lead from building A to building B. What we have is special, something that the big cities don't have, because they've torn it down. And that's the bottom line. And so, we're so lucky that we have what we have, and I just would like you to consider. Yes, it would be great to have a pavilion, having gone to the first food truck, I almost passed out standing in line because it was so hot, but not at the expense of this incredible historical asset that there are other possible uses for.
If we can find other possible uses, they're financially fixable. I think that it warrants exploring for a year, and since we have these businesses that are willing to set aside a specific fund and do this for us, I think that we should consider.
No other questions on our proposal?
Yeah, what kind of money they're talking about in the first year fund-wise, and we're going to bring it up ADA compliant with our funds. Yeah, I mean, to make that building usable, that's where we got to go with it.
ADA compliance for historical building requires only first floor accessible, but Jesus, now.
But we don't want to make a hundred-year-old storage building, do we?
No, it doesn't.
I mean, that's what, if we just, if we don't leave the access to the whole thing, it's a storage building on top two floors.
There are, now, this is where the Texas Historical Commission can help us. We have received an email from the Texas Historical Commission that we could be a recipient of a Preservation Texas grant, and sad to say, but the building being in jeopardy makes us an incredible candidate for this grant. We could use those funds to do an assessment, to find out what specific code and ADA requirements we would have to meet, and help us find a plan to mitigate that. Additionally, we have access to the Texas Historical Architecture Department, that we come down and do an assessment. Eric has done some research on a limited-use, limited-access elevator that could possibly take care of some of the access issues, so.
Elevator in that building will be real hard with the segment.
Do you have, do you have concrete numbers?
That's where, that's where a committee needs, that's where a committee needs to be formed, to find the, find these concrete numbers. And the question of ADA compliance, you make this, everyone is making the statement about ADA compliance. ADA compliance for a historical building does not mean there has to be elevator access to all parts of the building. There are multiple historical methods for maintaining the ADA compliance. There are, where they are given dispensation, because they are a historical building, cannot have that. There are several ways around it. This committee needs to be put together to find all these answers, and to have the correct answers as to how, how much it's going to cost. We may find in the end this year that the cost is prohibitive to do anything with it but raise it. If that's the case, then that's the case. But it may not be. There may be multiple other issues that we can come up with within that time period. Doing it within a month has not been capable, where, I mean.
We have to press. I can, I can, I can question, press.
Can I say something on that, too? The research I want to see. My name's Eric Pluton, also on the Young County Historic Commission, also on the County Museum Board. In the research I've done on the ADA compliance side of it, first off, with the Historical Commission, since it's a historic building, they can grant waivers for some of those ADA access issues. They would have to have their architects look at it, but those waivers, if they determine that it would affect the historical aspect of the building, or the structural integrity of the building, they can issue waivers to grant any of those ADA compliance issues we would have. On top of that, looking at the building codes currently, even for new structures, the elevator requirement is waived for buildings with less than three thousand square feet per floor. And that building is half that, they're just under fifteen hundred feet per, or square feet per floor. So, even if a new structure were built today just like that, it would be exempt from an elevator requirement. So, those are some of the things I've found just on the ADA requirement side. On top of that, the American Disabilities Act gives a five-thousand-dollar grant per year to help cover the cost of addressing ADA compliance issues, and also a twenty-thousand-dollar tax credit to help with those ADA compliance issues. So, there's money and grant money out there to help get over some of those issues. Just some research I've done.
We just need all of us working together to find the answer.
Well, just like the point, I guess, of relevance, in my opinion, is that what we're talking about is county property, not city property, so. And that's, as a style, I guess you would say, in the Central appraisal district's record, I'd say who the record owner is now. Do we have any digging to it? No, I don't think so, but that's been county property there since eighteen seventy-four. All of it was county property, and we certainly made some efforts, we had the opportunity to purchase the old post office museum, and that was a pretty long debate, hundreds of years ago. We sure made a mistake by not acquiring that and letting it go, in my opinion, and I was a part of that myself. I guess when we get clear, then we're talking about the city of Graham's hundred-and-fiftieth celebration. And I can, I can appreciate what they're trying to do here, and with this, and I don't have anything necessarily opposed to that, but I can see the historical aspect of the building too, which, you know, a hundred-year-old building, especially a county jail, where it's housed, relevant subjects in it, I guess you would say. I've got to be pretty neutral on it, I'd say both, I'd say both sides, I mean.
Again, too, that is why we came up with the proposal for a committee that has, includes the city. I do want to include the city as specifically stated in this committee, to include the city and the county, and the Historical Commission, and the public, so that we can all work together to find best uses. You know, I can see this fashion of what you do about a building. I can see the building, what it has done in its lifetime, you know? It's served a lot of good purposes for different, different things. But I see also, I see a building that was made with hands of somebody that's not even around anymore, but I see limited, limited possibilities for limited amount of people. You see what I'm saying?
Can I?
Okay. If we can, in that year, find a use that actually helps drive historical tourism to the square and to the community, that would actually help the community more, or as much as a pavilion. I'm looking at best use to them. If best use is a lot, I'm going to be sad, and I'm going to be upset, but, but I think we deserve to give it the time. It's been here a hundred years, let's give it the year to find out what that best use is, is my.
You know, I understand that taking a year, but I understand it taking a year to figure out some kind of proposal, because that's been vacant for most, most of this year. It's been vacant. And the last people that have vacated it from it, if it had been good enough for them to stay there, they would stay there. But it wasn't, because of other needs and other desires and other issues. To maintain the bottom floor of something, it's just a building, what are you going to show them when somebody comes? Is this going to be a building? This is the bottom floor of the jail? This is what it used to be here? Because most of the aesthetics of it is gone. And I can see where y'all's compassionate about that part, but my heart says, would it be more beneficial that more than just a handful of people can enjoy it? Not only from now, but years to come? And I'm not saying disregard what the jail is and where it's standing by, but if you take parts of the jail and implement it into another building, then the jail lives on. Can you see my point?
I see your point, and that's where sitting down and discussion is where, where I think that, instead of in a confrontational position, sitting down and discussing and saying, okay, you have a great point, let's look at.
And I understand that point there, and I understand that there are a lot of people that has said, "Save the jail," once we explain it to them about the jail, they go, "We don't, we know the whole question." And that's the whole deal, guys. There's only been a half of the, half of the equation been heard, not the other half of the equation ain't been heard. And I've had accusations on Facebook toward me, like, "What's worth, what's in it for Jim?" Well, it ain't even nothing for Jim. I was given a position here, like a position, to look after my constituents, not just ones in my precinct, but every one of them.
But every one of them.
Lives in Young County. And I'm for whatever benefits Young County, and whatever factor in that situation. I don't care if it's Graham, Newcastle, Army, wherever. It's irrelevant, because we, as a county, as a whole, that's everybody that lives in the county. We all sharing everything. The good and the bad.
I'm actually in agreement with you.
Good and bad. You know, and I see us fighting over something that has had its use for that inferior time. And it's, and you got to ask the question.
We've got, about a young lady here, with lots been trying to get into the conversation a lot, like, call me, and then, or, we're in a conversation.
I was going to bring this up here, as a forum that obviously got, I didn't realize wasn't going to happen, but my name's Fontaine Ramos. I am new to the community, and, you know, I'm all for bringing more people, bringing things to the downtown area, you know, having a thriving community. But also, you know, what we're seeing across this great nation is history being destroyed, you know, taken, moved away, because, you know, so monument, you know, that person had a sketching background, and then, you know, in this case, the jail being torn down. My question, then, as you said, this is about property, who owns, well, my question is, who owns a property of that empty lot, right on the southeast corner of this county?
Ownership record is Young County.
Okay, so, as I see it, that lot is perfectly capable of starting to erect a pavilion to this day, because it's empty, and I also see that there's a chalkboard that was put in about the food truck. So, why can't that be utilized and save the jail, and so that way, you know, we can figure out, and then, you know, maybe further down the road, you know, then taking it down. But like I said, I see a perfectly capable area that, you know, both can, you know, like I said, build a pavilion for, for the community, but also saving a historical market. Because again, like I said, history is being torn down, and what does this set precedent for the generations to come? That as soon as we see something that no longer serves its purpose to put it out, I mean, because if that's how we see things, I mean, why don't we start, you know, I mean, you know, it's all like, oh, well, they no longer serve a purpose. So, like I said, you know, I'm all about, you know, finding a way to get, you know, this pavilion, because, yeah, I feel like there are still a lot of things that happen downtown that it could be utilized, food truck, you know, so on, so forth. But like I said, I feel like there is a spot that they can facilitate it without the cost of tearing down the building, and also just saving the cost of what it's going to cost to tear down that building, you know? I mean, let's think about dollars. You have a spot that's perfectly capable, that, again, like you're talking about, it's about given property, well, then, let's try to see, and that way, everybody's needs, everybody's concerns can be met, and then that way, we can also, like I said, give ourselves times to figure out, like, what can we use that building for? Because as has been mentioned, tourism is a very big thing, and that's what usually brings out people to small towns like ours, is the history, of what they can't get in a city. Because I moved here from Austin, and guys, I have seen history being torn down, I mean, within years. I mean, that's part of why I left, because the city is no longer the same city I had moved to fifteen years ago, and it is unrecognizable. And is that what we want, Grant, to be, unrecognizable of our history? Because that's what I feel like this town thrives on, is the history and the wealth that it, like, that it contributes to our town. And I would like to see that maintained, but while also, like I said, providing things to bring people to town. That's all I have.
Thank you. Does that follow up on her comment?
Thanks for bringing that up, Sonya. I wanted to give you a little history, though, about that vacant lot, and a couple of times, when I have come and visited with the Commissioners' Court, actually about six years ago when I first moved here, the judge and I walked the square, big picture, we know there's a bad need for the county to have more room, and talked about a county annex for a lot of years, and we, they have been very diligent looking at some of their options, I know they've looked at. That lot's been vacant ever since I got here, and we, as a city, have kind of tried to work and thought that would be an ideal area, and the Rotary brought a proposal forward to the Commissioners' Court to discuss doing something on that vacant lot as well. We could build a much bigger pavilion on that lot that would serve a community need. It might be a way where we could both, for lack of a better way of putting it, get a win out of this particular situation, because that vacant lot does serve our needs for what we'd be looking at. But we have actually been shut down numerous times over that particular vacant lot, so I appreciate the comments, appreciate the discussion, and I think it's something to be had, but in conclusion, I appreciate everyone's comments today, and I do recommend that. and, and I do recommend the committee, you know, part of bringing this recommendation forward from a city's perspective, why in the world would I want to take over the county's hundred year old building? So, before you completely criticize the city for even making this recommendation, I would like nothing better than to have that open lot, and you guys keep your livelihood. I'd love for that to happen. That would be perfect in this scenario where everyone has the opportunity. But I am a little frustrated, and Judge, I apologize that you keep making a comment about the city of Graham being a hundred fifty years old. This city of Graham has always been in Young County, has been since I've lived here, and always has been. We need to understand, we need to quit worrying about that city limit sign, and understand we're all in this together. All of Young County's in this together. And I would hope we would keep that perspective moving forward.
I might understand that probably better than you do, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to say something. I don't remember the exact name, but I think it's Franklin Bill Tennessee. They have a historical community that's working really hard to save old buildings. And what they did with their old jail, that's much like ours, they added a platform outside of stage, and then they have an open area, and they have outdoor concerts. And that's best both, we're all, we both get what we want. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
I'm not representing the Historical Commission. I'm in the public comments section. My name, if you don't know me, is Kent Pettis, resident of Graham, Young County. And unfortunately, maybe the oldest person in this room. I went to school with a lot of the parents of these council people, commissioners, sold cars to their grandparents. My opinion is destroying the nineteen twenty-one jail would be ill-advised at this time. Uh, the home I live in, Dr. Paget's house, built in the twenties, in the, as, uh, we've told you before from the Historical Commission, the twenties were an interesting time in Graham. The oil boom was on, and things really started happening as the petroleum industry moved into Graham. There's a lot of building going on. Unfortunately, most of those buildings are gone today. My house is nineteen twenty-nine, and it's well-built. I've had no structural problems with it, except, I will confess, and I started to just not bring this up, but it, it's, uh, plaster walls inside, and I've lost nearly every ceiling in my two-story house that had plaster ceilings that were put up in nineteen twenty-nine. But they're, after you clean up the mess, you could shoot rock up in his place and live happily ever after. That may not be possible with the historic designation of Texas Mark on it. I don't know. But that's the only negative that I can come up with, honestly. And also, I was watching a TV program the other day. It, uh, it was remodeling a house. And come to find out, the house was built six hundred years ago. And the new add-on was two hundred years ago. And it was solid as it could be. And they were just putting in amenities for it, living happily ever after. It's not, that was. And that really impressed me. And then I got to thinking about, maybe we do have an obligation to preserve stuff for six hundred years down the road from now. They might be curious about how we live, about what was our culture like. And I thought of this jail, one thing that, and I don't have the answer, but I do know, we were led through it as third or fourth graders from our school tours. And, uh, the gallows was scary to us. And they told us they've never been used though. But then it brought up questions. I think capital punishment is on the way out. People three hundred years from now that live here probably won't believe that we actually killed people as part of the public law. And so I think it'd be interesting for people, for the gallows to be preserved. And another thing about that, today, if somebody's sentenced to death, they're killed by the state in a state institution. But apparently, it was done at the county level in the twenties, or maybe at the city. I don't know that history. That can be told. That can be part of what , uh, that jail stood for. And, um, then we talked about, now Jimmy, I flinched when Jimmy talked about just use for storage. That's the first thing on my list. And I thought it might be good for storage, those upper floors, until somebody had a better idea. The city shopped, the county shopped around years ago looking for storage. I don't know what they finally did. They were looking at the building Mac Young built over here across from Morrison Hospital. I don't know if it was ever used for that temporarily or not. But I know you've stored this problem. You spent money, you allocated the spending of money last meeting to put shades of in this building to help preserve the records that you have. So, uh, I thought that was legit. Brandon, I said City Hall and Ex, I don't know the situation over in City Hall, haven't been in the building yet, don't plan to go. I, I put my payment out in the, in the Ex area. Um, I, I take it back. I've been in the building. But in the city, you might rent it. I recognize, like you're all saying, this county owns this thing. It's the county's building. And, uh, it's your decision on how to proceed with it. And, um, the Historical Commission certainly is interested in trying to do something with it. And there're going to be commercial enterprises that it could be rented to. And that maybe, if you go along with, uh, the suggestion of the Historical Commission, to study this thing and see what you can come up with. There might be a liable enterprise that would be interested in paying a rent for the building and preserving the building. Particularly, preserving, I've, I've lived in Graham all my life except thirteen years. And I moved back in seventy-six. And they were getting ready to tear down the big house. And for you that don't know what that is, that's where Graham's savings in Rome, is there's several prominent families with different surnames, but they were all related, lived in that house. And, uh, I fought it, City Council. I lost, as I usually do on things like that. Uh, I had been living on the east side of the Appalachians where things were built in the seventeen hundreds, and they preserved them. It didn't matter what you used it for. It was a residence probably to begin with, but it ended up being a law office, a medical office, a CPA's office, and they just kept preserving the buildings. And I thought that's how Graham ought to operate. But Graham, in the past, has had the philosophy, we don't care about the building, we just want to keep it quiet, keep the traffic down. But you can tear down anything around here. Oaxahachie, I have a theory. Oaxahachie didn't have oil money. And so they didn't tear down stuff. They didn't have the money to tear down or the energy to build new. Out here, we had oil money. And so they tore everything down pre-nineteen hundred. And now who's the winner? Oax, people go to Oaxahachie on tourism trips all of the time, and I'm jealous of their Victorian houses that they have down there. As far as the pavilion, I don't have a quarrel with it. I'd be surprised if it got much use. But a pavilion was planned for the Salt Creek Park, and seemed like you should shoot two birds with one stone with, uh, put your pavilion down there. Um, and I like this alley over here, I think it's still city property. I'd call it the First National Bank Alley. They had the drive-in window there, and it's now Kerwin and built, uh, Law Office. That's the old First National Bank building. That alleyway has bothered me since nineteen eighty, I guess, whenever they did that, that, uh, it's underutilized. Somebody ought to come up with a plan to utilize that alleyway, in my opinion. And then, lastly, uh, you hear all this about democracy versus representative government, and I'm not generally for them, but if, uh, if we had a referendum on, do the county voters want to give up ownership of that property? And then if the answer was yes, then the city might have a referendum. Does the city want to buy it or take over responsibility for it? I know the, what was built is American Legion Hall that all the civic clubs use for lunch. That was hot potato. Nobody wanted to own that thing and be responsible for it. Frankly, I, well, now I guess the city has it, again, now. Um, so anyway, that's about all I was going to say. I like the Historical Commission's idea of studying this thing tomorrow. Don't get in a hurry on it. And we'll all live in the same shoes you guys live.
I'm Jack Graham, and I've sat in a position like y'all for about a decade. A little bit different, but I'm the same. So I can appreciate old buildings and maintenance and budgets and all that stuff. But, um, I will say, you know, I appreciate Graham and Young County history as much as anybody. Uh, but just because something is old doesn't make it historic. And you don't have to be old for something to be just historic. I mean, we can have something historic happen tomorrow that we need to preserve and do that. But I don't, you know, I don't know what is so as historic about this jail. I'd love to hear it. I know it's been there for a while, but I don't know that we've had anyone terribly historic in there. We set it up for a hanging. Never happened. Maybe that's historic. I don't know. Maybe no one's never done that before, and we're the only people that decided never to use the hanging part of our jail. But I will say, uh, the lady that left, um, she had a great idea. We came a long time ago about putting some of that empty lot, uh, to try to, something for the counties to, to come in and be able to use on the square, whenever we do things on the square and all that stuff. And if we could do that, put a pavilion for everyone in the county up for there, and save a stored building, uh, I'm all for it. So, there's options. If y'all can't, can't come up to a decision on what to do with that building, takes a year to, you got an empty lot sitting next to you and been used in a long time. Put it to some use. That's my suggestion.
Can I say something else about that corner lot right there? It is utilized. We utilize it during skin weekend. We utilize it during food truck setting up our kids' station. The, I think the main thing that is happening right now is exactly what Jack just said. Just because it's old does not mean it's historical. And we are leading people for false, we have told people false information. This is not historic. It's just old, um, historic with...
State fact, I would say.
So...
Historic building.
And that's why I'm asking, because when you look it up, you can look up all the facts that you want. Nothing historical has been posted on that building. Am I correct?
It's a marker right now. You just want to go to marker.
I mean, what's the qualification for getting a marker?
You have to go through a rigorous application program, and you turn it down to the state, Texas Historical Commission, and they determine whether it's a Texas historical site or building or not. And not everybody makes it. We have...
And, and I think that's where my question, you know, that comes in. What happened that made it historical? Because it's old, or did something happen there?
The...
My, I drew.
I want to hear that.
The architect that built this, that designed this and built it in nineteen twenty-one, uh, is a famous, give me his name, Eric...
C.H. Lineblock.
C.H. Lineblock, thank you. Uh, designed buildings and most of his buildings because the, the, the small number that he built four of the, uh, the, in the state of Texas have all been declared historical just based on his, uh, designing of the buildings. Uh, it has served, from the nineteen twenties, it's the only county-level building left in Young County built in the, in the twenties. That in itself, it makes it a, a historical building. It's, has significance in, because of its relationship to the Santa Claus robbery, uh, that's where they were taken and fed and, um, and housed before they were taken to Eastland. Uh...
And, and then the second part of this is the money. That's really what it boils down to. Right now, county's paying maintenance yearly on it. I know y'all said y'all have it covered for a year, but that's only a year.
But that gives us a year...
And then, so, the, the proposed pavilion, there is a outsider that is putting their money where their mouth is on it. He is willing to front that money for that pavilion. We haven't seen that for this building. I know you want to try to get it done for this year, but it's, I mean, at this point, city is still out that money.
Not the city, the county.
Exactly. The whole county is out that money.
It's ninety-seven dollars a month, you'll worry about.
Um, for maintenance on that building, yes, ma'am.
June.
We are busy, so we're gonna take care of it.
It's for a year, but not continuously for the next hundred and twenty-one years.
I'm not sure whether to speak on my behalf for a minute. I just really wanted to say, and I, I, I can just go speak on my behalf. I'm a citizen of Young County and the city of Graham, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I've had the pleasure of doing a lot of historical research in Young County. And the twenties are most definitely a definitive time in this county, where the population that time was higher than the population of the county is now. A lot of foundational wealth came from that era, and historical first within the, um, oil field happened. There's first, there's, um, the top five, a lot, a lot of things that happened. So it's a very definitive time for Young County. Um, I also am a proud graduate of the U League program that, which is sponsored by the, um, Chamber of Commerce. And during my time during the U League program, I learned about the business sector, and I learned about the complexities of running the county and cities. And it's complex. It's a lot of people, a lot of decisions, a lot of things to do. And I also learned about how important tourism is and how it can greatly benefit this area. So, historical tourism is heritage, here what we call heritage tourism. And that heritage tourism in Texas is a billions of dollars per year sector of Texas tourism. And, uh, tourists, the reason why tourists come is because there are interesting things they want to see and experience. That's what draws tourism. And heritage tourism is a big part of that. One of the places that they want to see and experience are historic Texas jails. And these also have historic Texas jails off, off our, our sister counties, or some of them are spoke about here, are featured in Authentic Texas, which is a heritage magazine, that talks about how our sister counties have converted their historic jails not only to save and, uh, the, and show the culture, but also as a tourist, to attract tourism. Um, and of course, uh, I just basically, oh, it does have, it does mention Jalapeno and Play, and Shackelford Counties have a nice big writer in there. I can get these magazines for you just to show you. And I wanted to show you that there's options. There's other options we really need time to explore. And I think all of us, if we get together, there's some pretty smart people in Young County. I've found pretty innovative people. And I think if we give this all time to get together and talk, and put all of our concerns, everybody, the citizens of Young County, about what to do with this building, I think that we can come up with something that works for everything. Well, for most of us or whatever. But what I'm saying is, I don't have the answer. I'm just saying as a historian that there's, this is worth a lot. The building itself is a historic relic. And most buildings in the twenties, they famously overbuilt. So, it's going to, uh, interesting construction, also, uh, by a well-known architect. But I always want to say, you know, closing, it's not enough to want tourism. You have to know what drives tourism. It's very important. Um, people come for, and to see interesting things and to experience interesting things. And I really think it would be in the state to proceed quickly on this and to demolish our irreplaceable historic Texas jail in exchange for a seating arena. I think it would just be really wise to take just a little bit more time for this very important decision. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Tryst, and I live in the old Brooks Place, built in eighteen seventy-five. Mine is in the motion. My great-grandparents are dead and gone. The hands that built that stone house, when it was a fort, really, out there on the Brazos River, Indians were still around. The hands that built that stone house, when it was a fort really, out there on the Brazos River, Indians were still around. When mine and I bought it from, well, from our relatives, we're all, um, back in the eighties. Everybody told us it was falling down, you're crazy to redo it. But it was history. These people fought Indians here. They, we have a lot of history in Young County. But we could have pointed down, built a big house out there on the land. But we chose to restore where our great-grandparents came and fought. They had hardship after hardship. So we couldn't move twenty-two inch walls. And we, you know, we just, we did what we could with it. And we're so thankful we did because it does have a marker. It has a Texas landmark marker on it. Um, but we need, I don't know what the answer is for this nineteen twenty-one, but my great-grandfather was a sheriff here, when the old jail, which probably should have been saved too. But, uh, there are ways around this. There are ways to domination, there's ways to save this. And I am so thankful today that thirty years ago, Ryan and I restored that Old Brooks Place. And we still live in it and I pray that our children will want it one day, probably, I don't know. But it is restored and we still have people coming to see the Old Brooks Place from relatives from all over. They'll knock on our door. We have a cemetery we kept up across the road that, uh, all the old timers are buried in. So there's a lot of history. There's a lot of people that come to Young County just to see these different places that if you tear it, we're tearing everything down. Like we said, the landmarks all over America have been torn down. And our children, the grandchildren will not know history. We need to find out the history of this. There's a lot of history there. It's like Fort Belknap had the officials back then not had the vision to see Fort Belknap. You know, that was a lot of money. That's a lot of restoration there at Fort Belknap. And I'm so glad because I love Fort Belknap. But anyway, that's just a personal opinion to not just jump at something and tear it down because you want something, a pavilion for someone to sit in. Which would be good because I've come to all local things on the courthouse yard and, um, but we just need to stop and take a breath and think about that and look at our history and try to preserve. Because old town, I go through old towns just to look at these old buildings. We go through the South looking at old buildings. And so, um, I just think we need to take, step back and think about it. About more personal emotional things, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
I'd like to speak to this, I can, I'll talk to you. So I wanted to get a couple of comments on this too. Most of the stuff I wanted to comment on have been addressed on the history side of it though. I'm the one who wrote to the Historical Profile to get the marker. And again, as Ed mentioned, one of the biggest things that happened historically was that Santa Claus bank robbery. A lot of people don't realize how big of an event that was. It was nationally syndicated. Uh, all of America was tuning into the updates on what was going on with that. We had reporters from all over the country here. We had sheriffs from fifteen different sheriff's offices here for the manhunt. And that jail was the command center for that manhunt for the last three days of the manhunt. Uh, there were Texas Rangers here who were as famous as Frank Hammer. Uh, I was at the Texas Ranger Museum last Friday and they've got just as big a display as Hammer does. Uh, and that one alone would probably qualify us for the National Register of Historic Places. Very historic event in North Texas. Probably was the largest manhunt in North Texas, uh, in Texas in general up until about the late nineties. Even Bonnie and Clyde, the manhunt wasn't a big one. Let's see, uh, it was the first time an airplane was ever rolled out for a manhunt. And the newspapers described it from, I think it was the Hollywood Reporter had described it as an airplane bristling with machine guns. Because they actually, not only did they just take an airplane out, they took machine guns up to shoot these guys on the river when they found them. Uh, so as far as the history goes, that was just one major historical event for it. Also on the local history side of it, one of the sheriffs served the longest tenure there was H.C. Williams, Jr. Uh, his father, H.C. Williams, Sr., was also a sheriff here in Young County at the first jail. I should say the, the first jail of reincorporated Young County, not counting the Belknap jail. Uh, but he was also a witness to the Young Creek raid in eighteen sixty-four. At five years old, he witnessed the raid and he wrote later on in life as a sheriff, he wrote one of the best eyewitness accounts we have of the Young Creek raid. So the family history there at the local side of it's there. And then, and some of the history of some of the escapes that came out of there, uh, and the manhunts for those guys. Another interesting historical fact was, uh, something I'd never heard of, but there was a man who, who went around the state of Texas to pick up the prisoners that were taken to Huntsville. Uh, his name was Bud Russell, Uncle Bud Russell. And he drove a, a black wagon with basically tarp suds and a cage on the back to pick these guys up. He was the chief transfer agent for the state of Texas for forty years. Drove three point eight million miles on Texas highways and only temporarily misplaced one guy in that entire time. So there was a big write-up in the paper one day when he came through Graham to pick up someone we had here on death row. And, or he was found for Huntsville, I don't know if he was on death row or not, but he was headed for Huntsville prison. So he stopped here, uh, had dinner that night with Sheriff Williams. They actually put all the prisoners in the jail here. And the paper covered that like it was this major glamorous event because by that point he had the chief celebrity status. Uh, his history was such that when he retired in eight, for nineteen forty-five, they retired that position. At that point they said, no, from now on sheriffs, you bring your own people up to Huntsville. We're not going to send a transfer agent anymore. Uh, he had big shoes to fill and they didn't fill them. Those are just some of the historical aspects along with some of the boomtown stuff we had. You know, at the time that jail was built, we had a need for an increased jail because one, we had boomtowns. You know, oil fields all over the place here. And that brought in, you know, roughnecks and other, those types of people. Right at the same time you have prohibition. So along with those guys, you've got a lot of drunk and disorderly conduct kind of stuff, a lot of stills getting busted up, those kind of things. So that dovetail with the oil field and prohibition was a major part of Young County at that time. And we were right smack dab in the middle of all that. And the jail played a huge part in, in that kind of history too. So I did want to touch base on the historical side of it. On the usage side of it, again, I like the idea for him to commit to talk about that. Uh, find a better use for it. My personal preference will be for a history museum. That's something we don't have in Young County. Uh, and I'll serve on the History County Museum for it with Tony and Kent. And they can tell you that I'm probably the biggest advocate to have that jail be the history museum. I think the location's great for a museum like that, right next to the Opa-Map. You've got an art museum and a history museum right next to each other. So as far as tourism goes, that's a great way to bring people into Young County for that particular aspect. Also, I think the jail fits the motif of our square. Really because of these, the buildings that were built in the twenties in the olden, our identity here on the square really is kind of the early twentieth century identity. You look at all the buildings around here and they were built in that timeframe. The facades are still there. Uh, as far as uses for the buildings, though, half these buildings are older than nineteen twenty and they're on their third or fourth use. So I don't see that as being a limiting factor. Uh, and also, one of the things that brings into us is movies. We've already seen that the Netflix special with, uh, Kevin Costner, uh, what was it, uh, The Highwayman? Uh, about Frank Hammer and the search for Bonnie and Clyde was, they used our bridge right here in Newcastle for that. And it brought income to the county for that. Uh, when, uh, there's a spin-off of Yellowstone called Eighteen Eighty-Three. I don't know if y'all have seen this, the show Yellowstone or not. There's a spin-off called Eighteen Eighty-Three that were filming over in Granberry. And, uh, the internet was abuzz with that with Sam Elliott on the square in Granberry, the bank building over there and the film they were doing there. And that guy, Taylor Sheridan, who's the producer of that show and also the, the newer spin-off, uh, Four Sixes, he has a ranch in Weatherford, but he also has a ranch in Jacksonville. They did some filming at Fort Richardson too for that show. Uh, if you haven't seen Twelve Money Orphans, it's another movie that just came out. It was produced by Texans starring Texans in the lead roles. They filmed that in Weatherford, the Pithian House, most of them. Uh, so the filming that they're doing in Texas now, there's all, Texas is becoming a hotbed for filming activity. And I think the way the square looks right now with that building and the other buildings we have is a great place to, to invite those kind of people to come in and film those period type movies like that. And I think tearing that jail down would only hurt that, not help it. Uh, again, my preference is to use it as a museum. That's something that we would discuss during that, that committee. Uh, and I like the idea of putting a pavilion there on the corner. I have no problem with that. I support the pavilion completely. Uh, my preference would be to start there. It solves a lot of problems for the city because they don't have to wait on demolition. They can get started immediately on that and build a bigger pavilion. And I think with the money they would save on demolition, that money could go into building a meaningful pavilion. So I have no problem with that aspect and I think it's a great idea. Now that's really all I wanted to say on that, guys. Thank y'all.
Personally, I'm, I'm friends and think that any action will be, will be called this. Um, soak up all of these things that have occurred. Sometimes it appears that we're destined for defeat. So, uh, actually my suggestion that we stew on this will, um.
I'm going to comment, Judge. I've, I've received many phone calls for it and again, many emails for it again. Then as Mr. Wiley said a while ago, and a threat on Facebook, you know, if you go along this way, then we're not going to vote you back in and vice versa, but that's whatever. My opinion is y'all, y'all voted us in to do something to make choices for the county. But in this situation, I, I don't know if making it a museum is going to bring in a ton of people. I don't know if having a pavilion is going to bring in a ton of people. I don't know, y'all don't know. But my opinion, I do not think us five sitting up here should make the decision for Young County to have, to tear it down, leave it or whatever. I think it should be put to the taxpayer of Young County in a vote. That, to me, that's a fair way. Because for me to say that I'm going to do something, you know, this way or this way, I don't think it's right. I think it's y'all's property, y'all's decision. Y'all should vote for keep it, destroy it. And that's, that's my opinion. And that's the way I'm going to stick. I'm going to stick with that opinion. So no matter what vote is what, I'm going to, my, mine is to have, let you guys vote. Put it on the next, uh, voting, you know, in March or whatever. Put it on that, uh, you know, say, hey, y'all want to keep this, destroy it or whatever. But it should be a Young County thing, not a Graham thing. It should be a Young County thing. That's my opinion.
Uh, what else? Um, there might be a little good research that needs to be done. That would be in a measure that would go on about it. Is that what you're going about? So I don't know, I don't know that we can have a measure in the primary election. It probably would have to be either in May election.
It would be a May election, it would be.
Or it could possibly be a call special thing. I don't know, it might be that. You could bring up a point there, um, you know. Those two pieces of property jointly stand right now as the only property that, uh, or the best property Young County owns to expand or to have. This courthouse is ninety, it's soon to be ninety years old. And we're full, not any room for any more people. Not any room for any more storage. Got some places, a few places here and there. Um, precinct barns and those kinds of things and old items and things like that may not be suitable for any kind of departmental expansion or addition. Young County's growing. Um, the county needs a sizable location just for future planning. This issue here with regard to the property where a previous L E C set equals a nineteen seventy-seven building, which probably was one of the more modern ones around the square, maybe the most at the time. It's obvious I wanted to repurpose that right two or three different times, but, but of course it didn't feel like that all happened like that for in its, um, state as it is right now. It's generally used for any kind of city activity, whether it be food truck show, Christmas stroll, any of those kind of things, it's, it's generally been used, so. Maybe to look at that, my opinion is, is that the rest of the county, not just Graham, but the rest of the county, needs something in return, uh, if we give up part of it or all of it. So we need something greater than.
Can I speak?
You may.
Well, I was asking you earlier on the grants, if you were talking about it. I want to know how much money we're talking about in the future. Not one year. We need to know what we can do in county because what we do at this point in time is going to affect the county's taxpayers for years on end. It doesn't matter if we do or do not do an elevator, uh, to me in person. But it will matter to what we wind up paying overtime and maintenance taxes. If it stays in the county's, uh, pay. I mean, if it's ours to take care of, it will never go away at this point. Uh, so we have to make decisions based on what the value of it is for the future.
Absolutely.
And at this point, we're not getting hold truths on either way. Let's, if we're going to do this, let's get full truth. Let's get dollar signs that actually, I mean, we can, taking it over for a year does not give us a full truth of what it will cost us in the future.
Absolutely. Uh, it gives us the chance to put together, that was why in my proposal, maybe I didn't state it as clear, but it holds us to finding a use that's best for the county within that year. It, it could get drawn out for long periods of time. But if, by putting it to committee with the commission, with the historical commission, with the city, finding the best use, the least cost to the county, or the best cost to the county, have best to spend the money going forward. There may be an opportunity out there to form a foundation that, that will pay for it in perpetuity. There may not, we need the time to, as a group to discuss what's best and how best to take, to take care of it. And as Mr. Brooks said, you put it before the, the people.
I don't have a problem putting it before the people. I want them to tell me what to do. And most of them, if you go tell them you're going to have to spend tax dollars on it, they're not liking that.
Right.
So that's where I'm sitting right now. I don't want to go in and pump thousands of dollars into an old building that people won't appreciate the end. So come up with something that's real, legit numbers on it that'll tell us, hey, yeah, this is worth saving and I'm behind you. Other than that, I, I really can't say I want to burden the taxpayers with the burdens from here to the end of time.
We as a historical commission don't want to burden the taxpayers. We want to find the answer that doesn't burden everyone. We want to find that best, uh, for at least some of us.
And I have a problem with the city having that little, that's just personally me, that little spot. If they want to build a pavilion, I, I mean, I think it's, you know, for that little spot right there right now, I think it's a great idea because it can be very valuable. I mean, food trucks, the carnival, the lines of carnival. You know, there's a lot of things that could be used.
Mr. Bennett made an observation that that would give the city a, a leg up. Rather than having to spend the time and money to tear it down, they can start the construction and.
Go pick away from the rubble down. Yeah, that's going to be my closing argument, making this address for the day. Judge Bullock, Judge Bullock kind of commented on what the purpose of the vacant lot was for on the corner. It's for future expansion of the courthouse and the courthouse services. And I think some of us, there's an agreement, we need to hold that property for that purpose there. But, uh, you know, that is, all of us, we're elected officials up here to, to take care of. of county assets and county business, you know, and to me, it's just irresponsible to be elected and practically give something away, prime real estate away for nothing in return.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but as Mr. Anderson said in his proposal, it would be a Young County City of Graham pavilion. It's not just a, we're not giving it away, I mean, it's still going to be a, a double, or a double head thing.
Could I make a comment? We never have gotten to the discussion point whether it's going to be given away or not. Stacy, in all reality, two years ago, I came to you before when we were working on moving the old city hall, I know the county needs an annex, I know they would need a roof. There's two kinds of people in life, people that are part of the problem, people that are part of the solution. I've tried to be a part of the solution, I've tried to offer solutions for the county. We offered the old city hall in this very commissioner's court, because I don't know who to go to exactly individually, I just brought it to you guys as a commissioner's court and said, hey, let's have a discussion about that old city hall for an annex and possibly swap it or alter it. So to, to simply say that we're expecting it to be given away now, we never got to that discussion point, but at the same time, there's been a lot of discussion and it's always felt very one-sided. So I wanted to hear that comment.
But we, we've heard the reasons why y'all moved buildings too, we don't need that at a county.
So when you're talking, uh, voting, is that county voting or city county voting?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I was suggesting. It should be only Newcastle, Lining, Livesville, everybody, we're just all have a vote.
I think you were referring to county life.
Yes, ma'am.
Would we do that for everything going forward?
Excuse me?
We have issues before the court, we just need to start putting everything in front of the voters?
No.
And it's kind of like the, the, when we built the other jail, you know, they kind of put it out. Anyway, I, I think on, on a big decision like this, that with a historical building, you know, that we should, it, it shouldn't just be, it should be the whole county that's included in on this, it's for the people.
That's what the, that's what the county commissioner court is, y'all representative democracy for the county.
Okay, y'all. It's my point.
I mean, I can just argue with you and we're not just going to go back and forth because I just, I said, it's, I think it should be for the people on this decision.
I think the people vote y'all in to make these decisions.
You what, sir?
I think these people vote y'all in to make the decision.
And I have made a lot of good decisions.
I'm not saying you personally.
Right, right.
I'm just shocked that y'all would want to do this as a vote.
Well, that, that is, you started on.
Yeah.
As a mayor of the city, and we've been with organizations in the city and the city council, you know that measures can be put on your ballot, just like measures can be put on, on each ballots. There's, there's times when measures are called for, and there's times when they're not. So counties often have measures put on their ballot to do something, to do something, you know.
And they're often not.
So I believe we've had measures on our ballot that have been voted down substantially. So we haven't had any measures this time or the last time, it's been a long time since we've had a measure on ballot. I believe.
John, y'all can do whatever you want, I'm just making a comment.
Okay. So what's the question here, of the court, is there any one else wishes to make any kind of comments?
I just do not want this drug out.
I'll make some comments, but if you'd like to make notes, come on up here.
Like, at this point, it's just going to be, are we waiting a whole year, are we both voting, like, we need a decision because some of the decisions that can be made on the side of the pavilion might be in a timely manner, need to know. Like, it might not be something that needs to be drug out, but, I mean.
I would suggest one way or another that it'd be a year, not be a year. Initially thought until we received supplemental agenda requests, that'd be some kind of decision, whether it was maybe postponed till our last meeting of the year or what, but some kind of decision to be made today. Obviously, we, there's two sides of the story, and both sides need to be presented. We may just fuel one a little bit before we make the decision. Commissioner Prue had an answer, that's a great point, it could be a measure, but I wouldn't expect to go a whole year, really, without some kind of decision made on it, because it's something that's been presented to us, like Jack says, we either need to make that decision or have, like Matt said, have the citizen, the county might have to see the pause, then we're talking about county assets, you know, and, you know, I personally think we need, or the rest of the county, I mean, as we got to City of Graham, City of Graham was the second county seat of Young County, it was the original one. This county square was dedicated to county use, for electing Graham as the seat of Young County, that happened in the river eighteen seventy-four. So we're talking about county assets, and, you know, I know that there's trading and swapping and going back and forth between public entities and purchasing items, building properties or something like that, that don't come before the people, and that's not unusual, but I think there is a factor unusual either. What's the question here with the court?
I think it's kind of like what Mr. Anderson said, we can kind of just take it and ponder it, maybe till, maybe till the next meeting or something like that. I think it's a table.
I have no problem doing that for sale.
I'll make that motion to table.
So the agenda twenty-seven? Or before?
Two of those special meetings?
Do you want to do a special meeting? Well, that might be a possibility, we may, we may have a special meeting. Prior to that, we're talking about, we're talking about the county property, and we may be able to have a discussion among the work members here in a closed session to iron some of those things out a little bit. It would probably qualify.
It probably would, it would be, it would be an election committment fair too.
That, that's, that's not, you know, first decision before the election. The other, that happening, on that happening, we'll call it something, at some point, I would share with you.
So little bit of harm, well, I'm going to move to the T's now. Brandon asked you to table the decision on going farther with his proposal and his thing. Now, that, that was really voted on, on that, now, I think the historical group is suggesting that you table, or pass their motion of delay in a final decision for a year. You've got two motions here, I'm confused on where we really are on this. I bet you commissioners are not sure what.
Well, I, I think basically we took both agenda items, the S one and the twenty-two together, I mean, that's kind of how we started the whole thing, because twenty-two was the city CBD, and then the S one was the historical commission, so we're trying to bind them all at one time anyway, so.
Well, this wasn't a motion, but it was a suggestion, Brandon's suggestion in the court, so we, we don't, we don't act on.
See, you have an action item on, agenda item number twenty-three.
That we can consider, discuss and, and are considered, meaning we don't have to take action on it.
Fine with me, don't, I'm, I'm delayed, procrastinate.
I think there was one other item up there that was, I took no action on, going to have to be revisited again, so.
We just have to gather more information when we table an item.
I had one table was to do security camera with video and audio for people to exchange children where you don't be abused or anything. We need to research a little more, something new, actions.
Want any other action to be had then? We're down to our last item, which is a motion, which would be an action to adjourn.
Okay, to turn this off, I hit this button, correct?